Thank you, Ellen. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the November sixteenth meeting of the Kingston Planning Board. This is, I'm Vice Chair. This is only the second meeting that I have chaired. The other one was a year ago and on Zoom. So there's a little bit more going on, so bear with me. We'll do the best we can. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce the people sitting at the table. We have our Town Engineer Dennis Quintel. We have alternate Steve Padfield, who will be voting tonight. We have Board Member Peter Coffin. Board Member and Selectments Representative. It's gonna be a night. It is going to. Rich Wilson. Rich Wilson. Board. Told you. Board Member Chris Bashaw and Kinsley Town Planner Glenn Greenwood. Absent with us tonight is our Board Chair Glenn Cobbleman. And Member Robin Dugay and Peter Bakie is late. Or? Three minutes out. Three minutes out, we're good. Oh, I'm sorry. And our Board Secretary, Board Administrator Assistant, excuse me, and Voting Member tonight because she's an alternate is Ellen Faulkner. Sorry, Ellen, I missed you because you were in the back. Ellen's in the back because she's not feeling well tonight. She wants to keep everybody safe. For anyone new to attending the Planning Board meetings, this is the process that we follow. The Chair introduces the applicant, who comes to the front table and presents their proposal. Reviews of that of the proposal are then submitted and read by our Town Engineer and our Town Planner. Then the Kingston Town Departments all have an opportunity to comment, so we'll read their comments. Planning Board Members can then ask questions. Then there's a public comment period where the public can ask their questions or give comments. Public comment is then closed and Planning Board Members decide how to move forward and votes are taken. So tonight. Tonight with the consensus of the board, I would like to take the third hearing tonight first. Because that is a continuance. So whatever, and that would. Is that alright with everybody? Consensus? Okay, so the third hearing tonight was Tiadad LLC Granite Fields Commercial Condominiums, Diamond Oaks Boulevard, Tax Map R three, Lot four, Land Unit one. The applicant is seeking approval to allow the construction of two, two-story, forty by a hundred feet, four thousand square feet, metal unslabbed commercial buildings. We received a letter today, or yesterday rather, from Tiadad. Charlie Zilch, their engineer at SEC and Associates Incorporated. Town of Kingston Planning Board, one sixty-three Main Street, Kingston, New Hampshire. Dear Members of the Board, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing to the next available Planning Board Hearing Date. Additionally, please extend the sixty-five day review period for an additional sixty-five days. Thank you for your consideration.
What is, what is the next?
Fourteenth, because we have the thirteenth. The seventh is ordinances and signs and stuff, so.
So it's the fourteenth. There is no meaning on the seventh or the twenty-first.
December, right?
December, yes. And that would make everything due by Thursday tonight?
Yep.
Move it to twelve fourteen, six forty-five, everything due by the night.
At noon.
And extend the?
And extend the?
Sixty-five.
Oh, and extend sixty-five days to another sixty-five days.
No, second.
Motion by Rich, second by Peter.
Well, what was the continuation date?
December fourteenth.
Everything due by the night. Noon.
They're doing the second.
Yeah, but they're doing the second.
Second, yeah, I'm sorry.
Doing the second.
That's a week and a, yeah.
A week and a half, go ahead.
Yes, the second, but I'll.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so we'll get out a little earlier tonight than we first thought. So, the original first and now second hearing of the evening is Robin and Janet Dudley. Twenty-eight Church Street, Kingston, New Hampshire, oh three eight four eight, Tax Map R thirty dash seven. Walter and Donna Carter, twenty-six Church Street, Kingston, New Hampshire, oh three eight four eight, Tax Map R thirty dash six. The applicant is seeking approval for a boundary line adjustment involving the noted properties for a revision of the southerly line of Lot R thirty dash seven. So.
Is it the top set planes?
No, planes.
I've already seen them.
So, would my coming to the table? Who's speaking? So you need to introduce yourself and you do need to give your address. You can pull up your chairs, come in.
Name's Bob Dudley and twenty-eight Church Street, Kingston.
I'm Janet Dudley, twenty-eight Church Street, Kingston. Donna Carter for this twenty-six Church Street, Kingston, but our residence is one nineteen Amesbury Road in Kensington.
Did you catch that, Ellen?
No, I guess we're two in Kingston.
No, she gave her address in Kensington. Can you just speak a little louder so the microphones pick you up?
The property in Kingston is twenty-six Church Street. Our residence is one nineteen Amesbury Road in Kensington.
Yeah, I'm Grant. I was gonna say the same thing.
Got it, thank you. Alright, would you like to tell us about your plan?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to tell us about your plan and what it is you wish to do?
I did a lot of mine yesterday to basically take the corner out of it and straighten out the lot line. In the future, build a garage or that corner.
Okay.
If the lot line is in that, makes it kind of, maybe a little more symmetrical.
Okay. Glenn, do you have any comments?
I don't, the end result is that one of these lots is a non-conforming lot, but it is actually getting larger. So there isn't a relief required here. It's a lot that's becoming more non-con, more conforming. It's a very small downline adjustment.
Do we, Dennis, did you have any comments on this?
Actually, I have not seen the plan until this minute. The only thing I would say is as long as the Septic system is not impacted by the cobbler. It just shows, it shows a tank, but it doesn't show the leak here, but is that close to where the line is? Do you know anything about where the Septic system is on that lot?
Well, the, that line is actually moving further away from that Septic system.
Right, so that shouldn't be talked?
No, why would it not?
Okay. Again, I just look at the plan. I'll make a motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. And I would like to mention that Peter Bakie has stepped away from the table. He's recused himself because he isn't a voter. Ellen, did we have any Department comments on this?
I think we've been right when there's the consent case.
Oh, wait a minute, here they are, okay. Building Department says no comment. Health Department says okay. Highway Department says no impact on town road system. That's it? Do we have any questions or comments from the Planning Board Members? Do we have anyone, member of the public that would like to comment on this plan? Okay, see none?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment as presented on the plans with a revision date of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And what do we have to do for, do we have to do anything for, anything recording or anything like that?
We will record this plan. But there's really no conditions to be met, so. This would be a flat-out approval.
Okay.
Any further comment or questions? See none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. With one abstention. Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes care of one.
Can I just ask, on that last vote? Peter recused himself, so it wasn't really an abstention.
It wasn't abstention.
I'm sorry, it wasn't abstention, it was a recusal.
It was a recusal, so.
As you know, it's.
Thank you, thank you.
He wasn't here to abstain.
Yeah.
Is this?
Could it just be the first package of the last six, which would be the new?
Okay, and all the rest is? It's just the rest of their folder?
That's this.
Okay. I was trying to figure out what was going on.
That's the first problem that we have.
Okay. So the next hearing tonight is Berkshire Dominion Holdings, AKA Saddle Up Salon. Ninety-two Route one twenty-five, Tax Map R eight, Lots forty and forty A. This is a continuation of the hearing held last month, I believe. The intent of the application is to make amendments to the previously approved site plan in an effort to bring the site into compliance per the Selectments Letter of Deficiency, dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty, as well as to clarify operation of the business as desired by the owner. So we have new plans. You said the old plans?
No, once I have my opinion here, my old plan, so.
And I've got another one, I've got a new one. So. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Wish I could say I enjoyed coming here and so could you bless him.
So would you please, for the record, give your name and your address?
So any more orders, but should you please, property address, I need to.
Thank you. And?
I, Charlie called me yesterday. He gave the news that he wasn't able to come. So he wound me up with what to say. And I would quite say adding a little color in my own. So the way that I understand it is that we are pretty much in agreement, I believe, pretty much in agreement with the site plan. Aside from the water shed issue, I think that's what we have left. We have been working in good faith to try to resolve that. The issue being that Charlie submitted, Charlie submitted a retention plot. And I'm sure Dennis will correct me if I'm saying something incorrect, but he submitted a retention plot on the site plan modification. And he had done that, actually against our bad judgment, but the idea was that we had also gone forward for outside entertainment. And the idea was that if the outside entertainment was approved, then, I think as you guys know, I'm just somebody with landlord. I am part of Saddle Up, just that you guys know. But nonetheless, if outside entertainment had been approved, then I was going to go up on rent, which would afford the construction of the retention plot. The outside entertainment wasn't approved, although many people tried to assist in getting that done. It wasn't done. So that retention plot now becomes cost prohibitive on the original plan. So what happened was Charlie was working with, and again, I think we have an engineer also that he worked with?
Bill Paul.
Yeah, that's Bill Paul, okay. So I'm trying to design alternative means of catching the water. We had done that. It was something that Charlie had thought was sufficient, and obviously the engineer thought it was sufficient. But I think Dennis, if I'm not mistaken, you weren't overly fit with it, right? Was that?
Okay.
Okay. So anyways, I'm here to ask to, we are still trying to find a better solution that isn't cost prohibitive on moving forward. So, again, my understanding or the way that I looked at it and I discussed with Charlie is I believe that the federal government has asked the towns to do what they can whenever a site plan or anything is up for review. Federal government has asked the town to do what they can to mitigate water runoff. So I believe Charlie explained that to me. And he explained that that's why this is somewhat important. My understanding is that there was reclaimed asphalt that was put down. Supposedly in, in Saddle Up had done it thinking that it was the same and the same water drainage.
Permeability.
Right, as the gravel that was there. That apparently the state had told him that it was the same and the town's opinion, I think overrides the state opinion, from what I understand. And the state's opinion is that the reclaimed asphalt is less permeable than the gravel, thereby creating the need to create some sort of water retention mechanism. So what I asked Charlie to look at is, you know, what is the, what was the water runoff with the gravel? Using it from a simple standpoint on a scale of one to ten, let's say it was a five. So when the reclaim was added, let's just say the water runoff went from a five to a seven. So what I'm saying to Charlie is there's something that we can present that makes the site better than what it was with the gravel, but something less than a perfect situation. A perfect situation being the retention plot that was on the site plan. That would be almost a perfect scenario. I guess we're going to ask the town to consider a proposal that is an improvement based upon what it was, but maybe not an ideal improvement. Aside from the fact I wished I knew what the federal government was handing out for money to towns and asking them to really do this. We know that the site, it's been a battle. I feel as though you guys have been certainly accommodating as you can be to try to get the site into compliance. But what we started with was more of a nightmare than, I certainly couldn't have purchased it if I hadn't known how bad the property was. So we're trying. We're going in good faith. I know that there are issues with the operator of the salon. I also understand that I'm the owner of the property and ultimately the responsibility rests upon me. So I'm trying to now come in here and make sure that this gets resolved in a good way. The amount of continuances pleased me no more than it pleased this board. Because again, you guys are here. I love you guys, but I would rather not be coming back. So I guess ultimately what I was asked to ask for is again, more time to try to present something that perhaps Dennis, hopefully we can come to an agreement on something other than the retention plot. And again, that will go on circles, but the reason why is just it's cost prohibitive, very expensive to add a retention plot. And we're trying to really, perhaps if we can have another vote on the outside entertainment and it can get approved, I can go up on this rent. And then I can justify a, he's complaining about COVID and the restaurant sales being down. So if I was able to go up on this rent, then as a landlord, I would have paid for it. But he's complaining about COVID and blames the fact that he doesn't have it as entertainment as well. That's my speech. Hopefully it didn't bore anybody too much.
Thank you.
Just one comment on what you said. You said the state and federal government's asking us to do stuff. They're mandating us to do stuff. And if we don't do it, they're fining us. And they're sending no money to support that. So it's a mandate that it's costing the town a lot of money to do. And then if we don't do it properly, they send us fines.
Right, so that's, and again, Charlie explained that to me, so I understand. What I want to do is start my feet up and down in saying, you know, why do we have to do this? Right, that's what you wanted to do. Say, why do you have to spend the money? But I understand the town is in a situation. And again, it's interesting how the federal government is able to mandate things without actually, I mean, so in a proper world, why isn't the federal government just saying to every town, make everything perfect? By the way, have a good time doing it. Don't ask us for any money. But again, I guess it's all situation.
One of the things that I'll get at as part of history, we're still waiting on documentation of the floating gazebo and dock.
Okay, so my understanding on that was on the last meeting, you're waiting, I think there needs to be some sort of, let me just go back a memory here. You guys will not consider an approved use until you get something from the
Engineer. Or? From your engineer that was gonna say what it's been used for, that it was handicap accessible, everything. They were supposed to support, send all the documents that they've never done.
There was, I know what you're saying. You're talking about the state DES, also the, on the shoreline permit that had been part of it, and since it wasn't, it needs to be applied for.
Right, so I thought, so we still needed to prove the fact that it was allowed to be there in essence. So if.
And safe and usable.
Right, so the way I looked at it was one, again, it could be as safe as anything, but if it wasn't allowed to be there, then what does it matter? So I think what we were, I think what Charlie was doing was working on getting the
Approval.
Approval, or just to prove to the town that it was acceptable to be there. And once that was the case, then I think you would want, I think it was the fire, I'm drawing back from my memory.
Your engineer was just supposed to prove that it was safe and usable and everything else. And we don't need to get into that tonight at this point and make sure you know that's still part of.
So those, the two, so the two outstanding issues that the board sees that are again, is the water retention and the floating dock.
You also have some sign issues still, that you have some illegal signs that have never been taken care of.
And the DES permit also includes the two fountains. They're probably an improvement, but since the DES hasn't proven it's not going to be.
Not that I don't remember that from the last few.
But it may have been two or three meetings, you know, that's what I mean. There's several things that we keep kind of forgetting because they've been brought up so many times that we'll have to bring them up the next time. And the signage is a simple thing, it's just.
Does anybody, and again, it's not your position to say, does anybody know in particular what signage they're talking about?
I know the painting on each building, the letters, that's illegal. You know, some of it's just a matter of there's never been permits taken out for it. It's just done without permit.
I know that there were issues. I know that I applied for permits and I think it was, it's very difficult to communicate with whoever. And as far as I know that the permits that were applied for, then nothing was ever done. I think that I find out later, nothing was done because they wouldn't issue permits because the site was in violation.
Right, that's true.
Right, but there was never real clarity. So we continually tried to operate in good faith, but the clarity came after the fact. So we thought we did the right thing by applying for the permits. Granted, they should have been done prior to.
I would check in the signs and let you know which ones are right and wrong and what needs to be corrected.
Okay, because if it was specific, in other words, hey, take down the sign, either get a permit for the painted sign or get a paintbrush and a wool over it, then it just makes it easy. Because I think, you know, all of us probably are getting real darn near tired of talking about the same issue over and over again.
One last point is if this had been perfect tonight, we probably would have put a deadline on having it done, which probably would have been, I don't know, June or something like that, based on your past season now. That's probably still gonna be the deadline, no matter how long it takes you to submit a suitable plan. So just keep that in mind.
Oh, I understand, okay, so.
We're not gonna let you come in here month after month after month and continue and continue and continue.
Oh, please.
And nothing, nothing on the site's approved until all the things are met, so there is no outdoor seating? Even though we said you can do it, it's not part, it's part of the plan until the plan's approved.
I see what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. So either way, no matter what happens, you're gonna be looking for the site to be improved by, in the spring.
Sometime in the spring.
And I really don't see that. I think that's very generous on the town's part. I don't see that being an issue.
That's all the issues I've got.
I just think we need to hopefully come to some sort of agreement with that water retention on a non-cost prohibitive solution. And I think, again, I think that Charlie just thought that what he was gonna present would be okay. And I think that, you know, it wasn't, so we can, we end up in that little time rush, I think.
So is the goal tonight, you're looking to just take that feedback that Dennis gave and request an extension?
That is very, very long-winded request. That is ultimately what I'm asking.
So probably you should have.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I'm definitely, I should read the feedback that they have on before we continue it.
So that would be the next step, would be our departments, so Dennis, would you? Read us your comments, please, to the, into the record?
Okay, so I've got the plans and left it on November fifth and also a response letter and also some calculations considered tonight that were dated November third. So I offer the following. Some of my previous comments, these are previous comments on a long-term operation and maintenance procedures document must be recorded in the registry of deeds. And that's for the stormwater management work that is, is on site. Not just what we've been talking about previously, but also at the end of the park about the south side too. Number two was out of the nine oh seven to the performance guarantee, be provided for all the groundwork proposed. This is typical for site plan approvals. Cost estimates should be provided by the applicant for review approval. The date of completion of all proposed work should be established. Number three, Article nine oh four eleven, an engineering bond is required to cover the cost for onsite inspections during the construction. And those were comments number four. Number four, comment that interests. And number five, relative to the drainage, I cannot agree with the proposed drainage scheme proposed by William Paul, E.E., F., and Charlie Zilch. The design calculations show proposed two feet wide by two feet deep stone trench with bottom elevation to be at zero two. The existing grade at the site of the trench is proposed ranging from a low elevation of one thirty-one to one thirty-five. Even if the calculation were changed to a bottom elevation of one twenty-nine, that would be a trench six foot deep of the upper contour. A two-foot deep trench allowing, following along the contours will not work since all the water will flow out the low end overflowing directly into the pond near the outset of the calvert that goes under all the coach load. For these reasons, I cannot support the trench design. I have supported the previous design intention infiltration basis shown on the plans that they denied. I have supported the previous design intention infiltration basin shown on the plans set dated 9/1/21. And so just to clarify, I don't, I don't, um, disagree with the function of the trench. A trench on a slope like that is not, um, going to fulfill the intent of detaining the water. That's part of a trench system or infiltration basin is to detain the water number one and slowly release that first, uh, uh, inch or so rain runoff from the site and be able to not only detain it, but also filter the water into the ground. And not have contaminants go into the, uh, the pond. And so, uh, I believe a trench that's on a slope like that is not going to fulfill that intent. And again, in, in, in following up on the, uh, discussion about runoff from the parking area, I think it is important to try to do the best we can to, to, um, mitigate runoff and any contaminants getting into the pond. So that's what the challenge is, is to find something that's going to work for it, um, as best we can. That's going to improve the conditions, improve the contaminants from getting into the pond. And, and I'm not saying that the trench system can't be done, I'm just saying that this design cannot go.
Okay, so that, that, that's actually sound encouraging to me. Uh, because I haven't had a chance to really speak with Charlie, he definitely has to know the problems. One of the things that I asked Charlie was, uh, does it make any sense? If you took the upper parka and pitched it away from the water and dug a similar trench? Again, I haven't been to engineering exhibitions, so it might sound silly, but would that, would that perhaps be able to capture some of our runoff from the top level? So if we pitch it away from the water and then put that trench, put a trench in there, so the water goes into that infiltration ditch that's away from the pond and then filters into the ground there to cure the upper level? Is that even conceivable?
I think that our goal tonight is not to design a system. The goal tonight is that your engineer, you talk to him about that. I don't want to talk about designing stuff right now, that's really not our function, so.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. It's, it's not meant for someone to ask.
Um, is that it Dennis?
That's all I have for my comment, because that's really the major change that was on the set of plans that I had to leave you.
Yeah, I have no comments. This was a, this was a Dennis shell.
So we did receive a letter from William Hall, uh, addressed to Glenn Greenwood. It says, civil design consultants, E has prepared this letter to address changes requested by the applicant to the proposed drainage system on the site due to cost of the installation of the proposed infiltration basin. The plan has been revised to remove the basin and replace it with a two-foot wide by two-foot deep infiltration trench that is approximately 160 foot in length. The proposed infiltration trench has been designed to treat an inch of runoff over the subcatchment area, which has been generally regarded as the amount to capture and treat pollutants in the runoff. An appropriate detail has been added to the plan set and calculations are attached demonstrating the capacity of the system. If any questions or comments or require additional information, please do not hesitate to contact this office. And then the next pages are all calculations and pretty published.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if the applicant is paying a fee, the engineer or the town of Kingston, wouldn't it be in our best interest to pay our engineer to talk to his engineer? So we don't do this back and forth?
We've approved that several times.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why it's not happening. So this guy, this guy designed something, he gives it to the applicant, applicant brings it to the board, the board gives it to our engineer, who reviews it, doesn't really care for it, or whatever the story is, then comes back, just since we're going back and forth.
Well, actually-
We've talked about this over and over again.
The applicant had copies of Dennis's comments.
So possibly your engineer can contact Dennis directly. It's just might seem a while.
You mean Charlie?
You're, you're an engineer, you're using the Charlie, that, that engineer. To try to make something work here and may alleviate all those back and forth time, is all I'm saying.
It's happened before, I don't know why it didn't happen this time. Because they have my phone number, so.
So you are okay with it? Yeah.
Yeah, we've given permission.
We, we said yes, we were agreeing with you guys.
We approved it, we're paying a fee for his services anyway.
Charlie, you guys have friends forever?
He wanted to call me on this and say, hey, we'll take a look at this before you're already sent to the town. I would have more than happened to say no.
But that didn't, that didn't happen?
No, no, no.
Just make a little bit of that.
Yeah, I appreciate that input, so I can certainly encourage the communication part. Okay, that's, that's good.
I don't have trouble with the trench, the trench can't be like this, all overflowing, you know what I mean?
So a conversation with the design company, between you and the design company, might come to something-
Sure.
Okay, well, that sounds like a very logical next step.
We've got a whole, okay.
All right, so the next letter that we received, uh, concerning this was from, uh, Charlie Zilch. It was dated November 4th, the first one was dated November 3rd, uh, this is dated November 4th. Dear members of the board, please find attached revised plans and all supporting data for the above referenced amended site plan proposal. Changes have been made in response to comments received from this board from the September 21st planning board hearing. These changes are as follows. One, the outdoor seating as proposed has been approved as shown, no changes proposed. The proposed outdoor live entertainment has been denied and has been removed from the plan intent note, see note four, sheet one. The settlement and agreement with the owner and the state of New Hampshire has been noted, allowing the parking within the right of way of Route 125. See expanded note 14, sheet one. Use of the floating dock as noted in note four, sheet one, has been conditioned upon the following as noted in referred note 20. Use of the floating dock, whether for service and or patrons, shall require approval from the fire department and the building department. Additionally, a permit is required by NHDES if not proven to be an, a love, existing use grandfathered. Said uses to be offset with indoor bar seating. A driveway easement has been provided benefiting a budding lot eight dash 41, see sheet two. Based on the discussion with this board at the noted hearing, we are proposing to modify the drainage design for the event parking area located on Lot 40A. In place of the infiltration pond is an infiltration trench consisting of a pipe and stone, of pipe and stone similar to the trench designed for the parking lot on Lot 40. This trench will be, will accept up to an inch of stormwater flow from the entire parking area in the initial storm event. This critical first inch of flow contains contaminants that would collect within a parking area such as salts, oils, and other pollutants and directs it to the proposed trench where it will be infiltrated into the ground. This serves in the same manner as the infiltration pond, less the additional storage. This is a much more cost-effective means of providing protection to the adjacent wetlands where none exists now. Additionally, it will not encroach or impede upon the existing parking necessary to support the business. The recycled asphalt now in place in the parking area will remain as is and is accounted for in the accompanying, accompanying drainage memo. It is my hope that the information provided satisfies the concerns and comments expressed. And if I can be of any additional assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me at the number provided. Thank you for your consideration. So that does address some of the, at least we know it's top of mind. Okay, comments from the departments? We have one for health that says, no comment. Okay, any other questions or concerns or comments from the board?
I just, one of the things I noted in the, uh, in your notes that I think we took care of last time was the, uh, the event parking. We decided to eliminate the term event and just call it, so you have a note in here that said the event parking sign should be modified. It were eventually marched and all that stuff. Was it, we decided that we didn't care about that anymore because we weren't calling it event parking anymore?
That's fine. I think that was, wasn't that done? I'm not saying it was, but I, I remember talking with that last time. I thought he said that that was done, but at the end of the day, I think it just needs to say parking and not event parking, right?
Right, and then here you have a note saying that it should be modified, which you don't have to do anymore.
Oh, I think you already did. But you, you don't really care either way, right?
Well, it's just that the notes, it's, it needs to be removed from the plan.
I would say in a note way, because you were not, you've done it at the site.
That was an earlier requirement that we had that he took away.
I'll have Charlie fix that.
Okay, thanks, yes.
Okay, um, there are, there is another comment here. Um, we have a comment from the select board that has asked, uh, us to defer from this meeting, uh, road agents and hilarious comments. And then we do have comments from the building inspector. One, signage still needs to be brought into compliance, no change since violations were first noticed years ago. The floating dock still needs code compliance review, see attached letter from SEC Engineering, June 1st, 2021. The letter of 1125, 2020 from Reginald Room, the second PE, was deemed incomplete, see attached. Uses of the floating dock, not known. Three, the ice cream window for whatever intended use still needs to be, still needs a building permit. Four, once the second floor office and storage base has been approved by the planning board, then the building and electrical permits may be issued. Five, event parking lot, the recently paved lot seems to be used on a daily basis. Why not delete the event classification and reclassify it as overflow and show stormwater management compliance? So those were the comments from the building department.
Basically reviewed everything we just said.
Yep, but basic, but I have to read them into the record, even though it's repetitious.
Can, um, Rich clarify that, uh, Rich's, St. Helier's comments were deferred?
Yes.
Okay, no further comment?
No further comment.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions or comments?
My last comments, we've said several times, you make our engineer happy, we'll be happy.
Right, no, I, I-
Work with him.
Yeah. Uh, I think Charlie does, so again, knowing that the other, they always, I feel very confident that the next meeting should be the last meeting.
Okay, uh, Alan?
Couple things, I didn't know if it, there might be any value to setting the plan actually clarifying that outside entertainment is not permitted.
He said that's on the plan.
No, they took it off the plan. They took the thing about outside entertainment off of the plan notes. And I didn't know, it may be some balance to actually having the notes be outside entertainment is not permitted. And he even put something about the special exception, only because that seems to have been some sort of unclear thing you have to re-plant. But I just wondered if that could be a note added. And the other thing I wanted to say is that while they did come in and provide us with additional funds, they're gone. So we don't have anything to make ends with tonight, we're in a glutton's embrace. So I just wanted to bring up there that I wasn't there when the money came in and everything happened. But I was reviewing the bond balance again today and it's down to almost nothing. So I think there's very large, uh, outstanding balance that's not recovered, but not anything going forward for Dennis's review. So I just wanted to tell you, I'm hoping we'll probably contact them in the next couple of days to talk about another fee. So you can get that taken care of before the next meeting.
Okay.
Retention ponds getting cheaper all the time.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Do you have a public comment, just?
Oh, yeah, excuse me, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. For those at home, there are no public here. Um, motion.
When, how long do you think you need to, do you want to continue to that December 14th meeting? Are you guys going to have plans? Do you think you're going to get it done by then, or does it need to be further down the road?
I think if realistic, I think that, so you want this done by the spring, which I think is reasonable, because nothing will be started until, I think that whatever gets done needs to be approved, I would say by March. Right, so that you can begin, so if you begin in April, I'm just thinking of this story, right? Then a couple of months to do it, that needs kind of a deadline. So again, you guys know better than, than I do, but I would probably say, why don't you, why don't we kick it forward as far as you can? So that'll be there, there's a tremendous amount of time between now and the next meeting to get everybody on the same page, because I anticipate.
I would not suggest the December meeting because the timeframe for things is-
Yes, over Thanksgiving week, yeah.
Christmas weekend, I know Charlie will appreciate it.
Why don't we do it January?
Um, but remember that January meeting is for, uh-
You have a January 18th, you have a January 6th meeting, which will be warren articles.
Warren articles.
And then if January 18th is the last chance for any changes they have?
Right. We would have time for a hearing on the eight, on the January 18th.
We would, you don't go on January 18th, you don't make the-
Then we're down to February 15th.
January 15th, so.
So.
I would go past January, just so if you have to fine tune, be back in February and then be ready to go.
All right, sounds good, so January 18th.
Okay, so.
And before you make the motion.
Plans due by?
Yeah.
January 6th.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, when?
January 6th.
January 6th.
January 6th.
So January 18th plans by January 6th.
And with Charlie not here, um, I don't know if you were able to hear what, um, Alan's proposed note was. Basically outdoor entertainment primitive except as provided by special event permits. Um, where's that back, um, is what we're looking for.
I'm only, my only concern about that is that consistent with what we, do we list all the things people aren't allowed to do?
Well, actually, what's interesting is they've got, they've decided, they've listed certain ordinances that they will comply with. My question is, why don't you just say that you're going to comply with all? It, it should be understood that we're going to comply with all, um, uh, town ordinances. But you've listed, uh, site and rain compliant with town Kingston's article, uh, noise standards.
The only reason I want to bring it up is because that has been a gray area due to how fast things were and whether they were committed earlier. It's all well and good that we all know, but six years ago, we're not on the board. It will be clearer if it's on the plan, um, that it was not approved. Have that?
I, I just, I, yeah, I know, it's me, I just don't feel comfortable, it's just not consistent with how we do things. We don't list out things people aren't.
Um, we have, I mean, when a, when a non-planned issue has been addressed before, yes, we have been, um, on-
Yeah, for example, um, on Jericho.
You take, you take.
Uh, we need a flip of paper.
Alan's so good at this. There we go. There we go.
Play and record, there you go.
Play and record.
Cause you did two buttons?
Oh, wait a minute, no.
Need two buttons, yeah.
Record and play.
Yep.
Gotcha. The blue light came on, I think we're doing it well.
Uh, I think if you look at the, uh, agenda, the, the application was requested to clarify, what's the wording on there?
Clarify operation of the business as desired by the owner.
And that's exactly what we're doing, because that was intended, point of contention, that the operator felt he had that permission. And he didn't. And so the selector specifically asked us to clarify the operations, and that's exactly what that note did.
Well, and I think, I think that was done through minutes, a vote.
Right, I think we clarified that in the approval.
Yeah.
When we do our final motion, that is part of the approval that outdoor entertainment is not allowed except with a special.
Yeah, I mean, I would feel more comfortable if that was a legal motion, it just seems very inconsistent with legal adism, that non, non-permitted item as a note.
Well, I do remember with one particular, um, house lot that was approved years ago and long before my time, um, it was actually put in the minutes, but that law would never be subdivided because of the wetlands on it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, something-
If the minutes are on the plan.
On the house plan.
Well, you know, maybe that's.
So just, just a comment, I mean, that was just something that was done previously.
I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm just voicing my opinion on it, I'm one person.
Yep. So we can set that aside till the next meeting. Um, so we have a motion coming?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue, uh, this hearing to January 18th and plans due by January 6th. Second, 6:45.
Second.
Any comments, any questions? Seeing, yes.
So is this still under the public hearing, 6:50?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I guess, so we have to extend the clock as well.
As long, as long as the applicant is on record as asking for a continuance, 6:55 clock is determined to be waiting.
I didn't want that to be issued.
Okay, that's true. But I mean, you can, you can state that, but when the applicant is the one asking for the continuance?
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay. All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
And that would be unanimous, thank you. Thank you, see you in two months.
Thank you, everybody, bye.
Thank you, everybody, bye.
I know that will be here at 6:00 to 7:25.
So, do we have any correspondence, Ellen, is that enough? Correspondence, there we go. Yep. So I know this was sent out to everyone, a review from Dana Truslow on the NH, All American Living permeable reactive barrier, and she sent a report in on all of that. She did summary, that report did have a summary, which says, I received and reviewed the May 2021 water quality monitoring results provided by Stonehill Environmental, Inc. Dated October 28th, 2021. As stated in the report, nitrate N concentrations are significantly below 10 megagrams per liter at all wells. Dissolved oxygen has dropped at many downgrading wells, especially those immediately downgrading of the PRB. The PRB is designed to suppress dissolved oxygen, which allows for the growth of anaerobic bacteria that transforms the nitrate N to nitrogen gas. The iron concentration is also higher than pre-PRB levels at many wells, a common geochemical occurrence in low oxygen environments as iron is no longer oxidized and immobilized. These concentrations, although elevated, have dropped significantly since the initial installation of the PRB. In summary, the PRBs are effective for keeping the nitrate N at low concentrations and the monitoring is providing the necessary assurance that water quality is not adversely impacted by the septic system discharge of the PRBs.
Alan, can you make a copy of that for me to have? It's easier for me to make a copy and I'll put it.
Copy of Town and City Magazine? Oh, this was to ask you, Richard, if there's an update to Breslin here and the lighting?
We have, have bought up, are buying a meter and we'll check it accordingly once it shows up. We have not gotten any specs back on the lights that we've asked for.
There's a letter from Sarnia Properties, One Havenport in Portsmouth, November 5th, 2021. Dear sirs, to whom it may concern, this letter will confirm that as owner of the Carriertown Plaza, 53 Church Street, Kingston, New Hampshire, 03848, we approve the outdoor seating arrangements per the attached sketch for the coming year, 2022, at the Carriertown Bar and Grill, Unit 7A. This mirrors the arrangements for 2020 and 2021.
This is because they were told to remove their outdoor seating per the governor's order and that if they wanted to continue outdoor seating, they had to come to planning board for approval. And so they prop the owner saying he's okay with it when they come forward.
There's also a letter from June 17th that says the same thing.
While they come forward with an amended application.
He knows they have to.
I'm not getting what that letter says that, so I didn't know if you needed us to send them a letter saying. We received this letter, but.
You may want to call Rob and.
I'll call, I'll call the owner, I'll call.
James, better than out in the winter, May or June next year.
Yeah, I'll call James.
Because that letter sounds like, oh, we're giving us.
That's what it sounds like. And James is, he's very straightforward toward this.
We also have a construction cost estimate and bond reduction worksheet revised for Solar Hills 2, dated November 10th, 2021, prepared by Dennis Quintel. And it says that the total bond amount originally was 323,819.85. The total value of the work fees and contingent remaining is 96,902.10. They're requesting of the bond amount to be released at 226,917.75. Request to release is 10 times the total bond for maintenance bond. Bond previously released is nothing, amount for this release, they're looking at 194,00535.77.
It's actually no bond.
Okay.
But that's the document that we use in case there's a bond.
Oh.
But he wanted to build and then bond the remaining to begin the building, right? So what he did is get the column and show the percent complete. He's done a lot of work, a little bit of pavement last week, so percentage, the listed percentage of the work was done. The followings, the fill that's been put in, the gravel and the paving is a considerable amount of money. So he wanted to have a new percentage of done, so he could basically go to bank because he's going to be financing or having a bank work with a bank. He wants to start building one of the houses. And so he would have assumed the planning board would want some sort of a bond at this time. So he wanted to build the road and bond the painting, so that's what shook out as far as when he comes to get a building permit, you know, how much is the bond going to be? If he has to put up a bond, this will show you what the bond should be.
So it looks like the bond should be 129,284.
That's the remaining work, the final paving, finishing the drainage, open sea the edges and shore gravel, things like that.
Wasn't part of his condition for continuing to monument the existing lots?
That's a separate bond, he's got a separate.
Yeah, but was it that part of being able to continue as he added monument?
I cannot remember that, but if that's.
Because I'm getting calls from people there that none of that has been done and they all think that it's part of his conditions.
Well, you know, again, he can be coming to the town because he was talking about clearing one of the lots and getting started on building one of the lots, so obviously that's self-intentional. He grabbed that one and I.
They're working in the house that was illegal at one time and now it's legal, they're doing work there. And I thought he had to have all the monumentation and stuff in place before he could continue.
I don't know about that.
Something, I guess I got to check the notes from the pre-construction meeting.
And also check Rob, do you want to make some of that for what he's working on now? There isn't much in that house that's been done, it's just a rough range.
Well, the plumbers are there now working.
Yeah.
And like you say, people who live there have called and said there's no monumentation and they thought it had to be done before he could continue. Because he didn't do it in the first place when he was supposed to.
And not in the packet, any other comments on that? Not in the packet, but we also received by email the engineering report from Dennis Quintel for Fieldstone Industrial Park.
Fieldstone was brought in again for working without permits after being lectured by the judge and Phil Coombs and everything, and I think he's gotten everything taken care of now.
Okay, so that's relevant.
All I can say is look at your reports and so.
Ellen, should that, Glenn, should that be read into the record or?
Fieldstone then? No, we're done.
Okay. Sorry, it came in my emails, so I'll make sure. Okay. Is there any other business that might legally come before the board?
Let me just, I talked to the two Blends, we received an application for, I forget the name of the company, who's with us, for the strip law kind of thing, they have gone to the CBA and done special exceptions, which would have put them on the December agenda, but the special exception's being challenged. So technically there is no special exception, exception if you're granted. So I just wanted the board members to know, Glenn and I are going to contact them to let them know that due to, and one of them was already planned, we're supposed to notify, so due to some of the errors of that, we can't put them on our agenda. So we're going to tell them that we're going to have to put them off till January because that's the earliest the CBA's going to be able to hear anything. But just in case anyone gets contacted, just wanted to keep you up to speed on what's going on.
Kingston Crossings, who's challenging the special exception?
I don't know the name of the company. It's, well, I know it's a company.
And this is Kingston Crossings, which is located where?
Magnuson.
Magnuson's Wildflower, so Selta's, Selta's, says they weren't contacted.
Okay.
And it says, right, inspections that they have, that they have been under by all the others, easement holders, everything else.
We probably really don't want to talk about that. Obviously, this is going to be an attorney thing, I just wanted to let you know, they did apply, they would have been on December, but because of this new action, we're going to contract and work to know if that will wait. Like, I just wanted to.
Because the planning board can't consider something that doesn't apply to something.
And we can't consider something that hasn't come before us yet, so.
That we can't do, we should be doing, we're doing a lot of talking about it.
So, okay, anything else to come before the motion to adjourn? Second?
Sir?
We're adjourned. Thank you, Adam.